Good afternoon, Firebirds, and welcome to today's conversation with our alumni representatives on the University of the District of Columbia's Board of Trustees. My name is Phil Palmer Murphy, I'm moderator for today, and I have this distinct pleasure as serving as the Director of Alumni Affairs. Before we get started, I want to thank each and every alum who participated in this year's election. Thank you for taking the time to tune in to the Candidates' Forum and submit your questions. Thank you so much for participating during the nomination process and voting process. I really appreciate everyone returning to Firebird Nation to ensure that we had representation on the Board of Trustees. We had a number of alumni who updated their contact information, who are raising their hands to volunteer and just be a part of all the good things that have gone on here at the University of the District of Columbia. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. We really appreciate your participation. We are going to hear from our alumni representatives on the Board of Trustees, the representatives that we voted to ensure that our voices are heard in the decision-making of the university's board. Many of you, you met the board members during the Candidates' Forum, but we're going to give them an opportunity to introduce themselves again. We're going to talk about today the takeaway from their first board meeting. So many of you may have tuned in to the September 22nd Board Meeting of the Board of Trustees, where our alumni representatives, that was the meeting that they participated on. So we want to hear from them about the people through that meeting, the matters that they plan to champion, which committees will they be serving on? And then also, alumni serve as a feedback loop to them, those matters that rise to the occasion of the Board of Trustees, but just the matters amongst ourselves that we could begin to talk about. So we definitely need your full participation today. I ask that you please submit your questions in the chat. I'll be monitoring the questions as well as panelists, we all see your questions. And we're going to go an hour today. We're going to stop it at 1:00, because I understand that many of you are home, you're social distancing, I hope, you're washing your hands, you're sanitizing, you're wearing your mask, please, but you're home with, many of you with children and grandchildren, filling that gap, you know, as we try to navigate this current climate, and just really taking care of the next generation of Firebirds for the University of the District of Columbia. So you would just make me an opportunity to, need to see who all is on here with me, because I was, we are hoping to have as many alumni representatives on the meeting as possible. So I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to start with our introductions. We have on the Board of Trustees alum who have served for some time, trustee Jerome Shelton, who was with us, class of 1971, who's been on the board for 10 years. He was elected as an alumni representative and then later appointed. So trustee Shelton, if you would like to bring greetings and give your introduction, turn the floor over to you now. Trustee Sheldon?
I'm sorry, General Schwartz is trying to get him, and he called me on the phone.
Not a problem. I'll definitely, I'll follow up with him.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I now anticipate anything other than welcoming my fellow alumni to the University Board of Trustees, telling how valuable and important their opinions are, and how happy we are to have a full table of alumni representatives, people who are committed to improving the university and taking care of the student population. Again, welcome to my colleagues and classmates, and I look forward to five very exciting years of success and more success at the University of the District of Columbia. Welcome all, and thank you, though, for calling in.
Thank you for that. And so, we're just going to go through our roster of alum who are on the WebEx today, starting in alphabetical order. Trustee, trustee White Richardson, let me, let me, okay, I'm sorry, trustee Musgrove. We're going to, we're going to go in alphabetical order. If you would like to bring greetings and introductions, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Melvin Musgrove, class of 1970, and of this current crop of trustees, alumni trustees, I think I am the elder, and that's a good thing. It's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon, and I hope we can shed some light on what we do, and I hope you can tell us some of the things you expect from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have trustee Barrington Scott, who has been re-elected to the board. He will be serving in his second term, so please, trustee Scott, if you bring greetings and introductions.
Yes, I just wanted to say first, thank you for all the votes that you gave, all three of us. We are excited about working on your behalf, and thank you for allowing me to come back on the board for another five years. I'm a 1982 graduate from the university. I like to tell folks that I was at the university during the golden years, when we had over 14,000 students, a big football team, I used to be captain of the football team, and we had lots of fun. So we're just working, we want to work real hard to get us back to those golden years, and thank you again for supporting your trust and voting us back on the board and voting us to the board.
Thank you very much. And last but never least, trustee White Richardson, if you would kindly give us some greetings and your introductions, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Antoinette Tony White Richardson, and I'm here, I'm with the class of 95 in graduate school, and very much like my predecessors who just spoke before me, very interested in finding out from you what you want from the university, because we need you to come home, we need your support, we need your physical presence at the University of the District of Columbia.
Thank you so very much. So staying in this order, give me one second, because it looks like I'm going to make Chairman Christopher Bell a panelist. Chairman Bell, I just elevated you to panelist, if you'd like to bring greetings.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
You sure can. Yes, we can, sir.
Okay, can you, okay, can you see me? Because I don't have it on, I can't see myself, but I don't have this, oh, it's starting video. All right. Sorry about that. All right. Thank you so very much, I appreciate that. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name is Christopher Bell, I'm the Chair of the Board, and I'm so very pleased to be here. I think that the alumni trustees are the most important constituency on the board, because they represent the embodiment of what we're trying to do, and that is graduate students from the university, but also help them to have jobs and careers such that they're successful in whatever that they do. And so the trustees play an enormously important role on the board, and they're members of the Executive Committee, they chair committees, they do everything. And not only do we have the three elected trustees that Faniq has already presented, but we also have non-elected trustees, I mean, alumnis that are in the non-elected roles as well, so trustee Shelton and trustee Schwartz, who I understand is coming to join as well, are, are serve on the board and represent the trustees, excuse me, the alumni very well. And I just want to say again, thank you so much, and to echo trustee White Richardson's statement, we need the alumni. We, you guys are a good thermometer in what we're doing, how we're doing, if we're doing it well, and the university needs to be in all communities and all awards, working to make sure that we're giving out the news about what we do and what we do well, and how we're aligning what we do, economy, and to help the D.C. region. So again, thank you so much for allowing me to be here and speak, and I look forward to hearing the ideas and suggestions that the alumni want, because one of the things that we are working on, but we still need to do better, is growing our alumni network. We simply don't have the contacts and the contact information from our alumni, we're working on it through our foundation, but it's been hard, and we need to do a better job of getting the information, getting the record, so that we can stay in touch with you and access you and give you information about the many wonderful things that are going on, not only at the university, but at the law school, community college, with our workforce programs. There's a lot of good things going on at the university, and we want to make sure that everyone knows about it, in particular, our alumni. So thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Chairman Bell. We really appreciate your comments, and yes, we really need alumni to return home to Firebird Nation. We have some incredible students here, and they could so benefit from your story. Many of you, since being seated, I've had the pleasure of talking to so many alum, especially alum from minor teachers' college, and I've enjoyed every conversation. So yes, I'm looking forward to reconnecting with so many more of our fellow alumni. So let's get started. We have a couple more people who are going to join the conversation, but until they are able to hop on the WebEx, I don't want to delay us, because we do have alum who have tuned in. So starting with trustee Musgrove, can you talk, share with us, like, what were some of your key takeaways from your first board meeting?
Well, during that first board meeting, I must say I was impressed by the wealth of knowledge that each of the members had and presented to us. It's a lot of information to absorb, a lot of energy there, and a lot of things that we know that we're going to have to give you, the new ones on the board, we'll have to adjust to and become adapted to. I think that one of the things that I heard that maybe was not spoken was the desire of each board member to be the best that he or she can be in terms of representing the university and supporting the real university and the work of the university. I was impressed with the opening address by the President of the university, President Mason, and I think, as I said, I feel that I've joined a body that really has the interest of the students of the University of the District of Columbia at heart, and very much respectful of the legacy institutions that make up the University of the District of Columbia. So I think we're going to have a, I think I'm going to have a very interesting and fulfilling time working on the board and working for the students of UDC.
Really, thank you. Trustee Barrington Scott, what were some of your takeaways? And this is not so much your first board meeting, so you have, you know, you have some experience, you know, in these meetings, but now that you're back, I'm guessing there may be some unfinished business that you would like to continue?
Well, first of all, I have to also say that the President gave a very detailed update where we are today. I've seen the progress that the university has made over the last five years. Happy to, to say that it was very exciting to hear that out of all the HBCU universities, we are now number 26 out of 97, and that's, has a, has a, that played a great deal of excitement to hear, and just to see where the university is going, to see that our student trustee is excited and is put, to put together some, some, some things that he'd like to see happen with the students on the campus, you know, and so I just think the, the direction that we're going is what, what, which is what made me feel so good about the, the last meeting.
That's great. And trustee White Richardson, your takeaways from your first meeting?
Let me tell you what I was impressed with, finding out that we were fiscally sound, meaning that I find that the Board of Trustees, with the staffing that is currently there, that financially they seem to be running well, considering the budget constraints that are currently going on during this COVID period especially. But even before COVID, I could see where, from the reports and information they were giving, that we're, we're in good shape as far as a state-run HBCU. And I put all that together, because there's various levels, and various something Barrington hit on, it was nice to see us move to 20th. So I was impressed that, I mean, there's some things in place, both academically and financially, that gave us a move up in the spot of HBCU. But the other thing I have to say is that I, from the board, is that I do know that they want alumni to participate.
Yes.
They want alumni to come home, and I'm, you're going to hear me say that so many times, you're going to say, is that her new name? They want our presence. They want our presence physically, but they want us to contribute. We want, they want us to be the alumni that we can be and fiscally give. I was a little disappointed, I'll tell you, when I was hit with some numbers that out of the alumni that less than 1% or around 1% give back to the university, I, out of a large number that they're able to contact. So I got some real good news, I always like when money is handled correctly, but I got some little sad news, is that I know that as alumni, we're out there, and that, that we can do better, we're going to do better. So that's my takeaway from the meeting, is that I am so hyped and focused on alumni. That's all I can tell you.
Okay, so I'm seeing in the chat that folks are recording that there's some sort of feedback, and I do apologize, it could be me, that it sounds like people are hearing some wind blowing, and I think I'm sitting right above one of the air ducts. So I do apologize, but you know, the air is on in the building, and while we were gone, there were times when, you know, it was pretty, it was pretty warm. So forgive me, but it is blowing at full force today, and I do apologize if that is creating some, some feedback. See that we have General Schwartz on the line, I'm going to bring him in. General Schwartz, I've elevated you to a panelist, if you want to unmute and turn on your video, we'd definitely like you to make your introductions, please, sir.
Good afternoon, and I hope everyone is doing well.
Yes.
I'm moving on up like the Jeffersons, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for elevating me as a panelist. I'm a graduate of the University of the District of Columbia, a 1980 graduate, and part of the School of Engineering, and I am so proud of the university and the work that it's been doing. When I first joined the board almost a decade ago, there were some challenges that we were going through with stability of presidents, the direction of the university, et cetera. I was glad to be the co-chair of the team that brought President Mason to the university, and he's been doing a phenomenal job in getting this university back on track. First, making connection with the city was the number one challenge, because without the backing of the city executives, we could not be doing what we are doing today. Secondly, we had to make connections with the community around us, the ANC, et cetera, because they had this backdrop painted about UDC, which was not good, and we've turned that around. Next challenge we have is making a connection with alum of the university, and making sure that we can get them in support of this fantastic university. I remember in the days when the numbers were pretty high in terms of students. Today, we are working our way up. We have the commercials on television talking about it's all possible here at the university. As I mentioned that in the last board meeting, we talked about, that was a main contributor to the branding. I would like to look at initiatives that would be main contributions to the recruiting of students, so that we can grow the numbers here at the university. I'm proud of the different schools that are doing very well, the School of Engineering, for example, even though that's, I'm a product of the engineering school, but they're doing very well in their undergraduate, graduate, and even the PhD program. We would like to see other schools turn out as well, the nursing school and other schools. We talked about the seamless pathways from, be it workforce development, to the community college, to the bachelor's degree, to the master's degree. I think that's very, very attractive to the students of the District of Columbia. Not every student is ready for a four-year institution, but we have the tools of this university that can help them get there. They don't have to come through the four-year door, they can come through the two-year door in the, in the, in the community college or the workforce development. So we need to work all of these things. These are all good things that the university is doing for the District of Columbia, and I stand fully behind it and supporting it. I'm done, thanks.
Thank you so much, General Schwartz, for being with us. We really appreciate your, your comments, your greetings and your introduction. If I can just change the order just a little bit, trustee White Richardson, would you talk to us about, like, have you all received your, your committees? You know, which committees are you going to be serving on?
The committee that I chose to serve on, I chose three. One of them, I found out on the 22nd, they have disbanded at this moment, that was the community college committee. Like, the one that I'm working on, the Alumni Task Force, which falls under Academic and Student Affairs Committee, and I'm also working on Operations Committee.
Operations. And can you share with us, what's your interest for serving on these committees?
Oh, it's very interesting, because they, of course, is obvious, Alumni Task Force, the alumni put me here, and I'm here for their agenda. That's number one. But number two, I'm also interested in looking at what the current student population looks like at the university, and serving on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee gives me some insight. The other thing is Operations Committee, I love to see how a place operates, I understand personnel comes under that committee, and being that I'm a union person, I'm always interested in how staff is treated and taken care of at any institution that I'm involved with. So that's how I came to pick those.
That's wonderful. Trustee Scott, which committees will you be on, please?
Okay, the Academic Student Affairs is one that has always been my, my love, to make sure that our students are receiving the best that they can, to provide an opportunity for them to grow and to be able to get jobs when they, when they graduate, and to make sure that different opportunities are afforded to them, like, for instance, last year, we, the last two years, we focused on the nursing department and also mortuary science. So we've got those two fields now, they are accredited, they're doing well, students are getting jobs right after graduating, and we're excited. So that's where I feel that I can be, use my best talents. Also, Academic Affairs, I'll be working with Tony and some others to, just to find out what we can do for the alumni and how we can best meet their needs as, as alumni or graduates from the University of District of Columbia. And also, I have a love to try to rename our gymnasium of our alumnus, so that'll be a major factor that I'm, that I'm excited about, because we do have an alumnus who actually was the founder of black basketball. So we'll get more into it another time, more detail another time, but I'm excited about working on that project.
Oh, yeah.
And then my love, working with, raising money, working with the UDC Foundation. As you well know, two years ago, we started a fundraiser called the Academic Excellence Awards. This is an award, a paper that is given to the top 10 academic students on campus, and with the, with the support of all our trustees, our president, and many others, we were able to recognize for the last two years, and we'll be recognized this year, for those 10 students coming out of each department who have excelled and represent what we say we're about, which is academic. So we're excited about our path and the way we're going.
Great. Trustee Musgrove, which committees do you plan to be on?
Well, I initially wanted to, very much, to be on the Community College Committee. Trustee, and trustee Tony told you that, that committee sort of has gone by the wayside. So I am very much interested in Academic and Student Affairs, so I'm going to be on that committee, because I, like the other trustees, want to know what's happening with our students at the university, and conceivably, how do I fit in trying to support that work? The other committee I selected is the Audit Budget and Finance Committee. That is not one of my strong suits, but I've always had an interest in how the money is spent, where it goes, and how we handle our obligations to our students and to our community. My, one of the major things I am interested in is helping all alumni understand, and I've said this before, that we are one university, we are one family, whether minor, D.C. teachers, Washington Tech, Federal City, no matter where we got our degrees, we are one university, and the university needs all of us to support the university, and particularly the students of the university.
Thank you, really appreciate those comments. Now, while in service to Firebird Nation on the Board of Trustees, are there some particular issues, initiatives that you plan to champion while in this role? I've heard, you know, trustee Scott, you talked about some academic excellence and the plan with renaming the gym. I'm hearing the importance of really connecting to the community college, but I really think it's important. So trustee Musgrove, I'll start with you. Are there some, some, some matters that is particularly spoke to you, wanting to run to be the alumni representative on the Board of Trustees, that would translate now that you've been elected?
Well, one of the things I'm very interested in is student enrollment at the university. I have not been on the board long enough to have detailed statistics on the amount of recruitment we do, the areas of recruitment, do we just recruit in the district? Are we going to Maryland and Virginia to recruit students? I'm very much interested in how we recruit students to the university, especially in the greater metropolitan area. I think we have some of the best students in the country in this area, and I would like to see us have a concerted, all-out effort to recruit some of the students from the greater metropolitan area. So that's one of the things I'm really interested in, in addition to bringing more alumni back to the university to support the university and its students.
Trustee White Richardson, now that you've been elected, you know, what, what are those important matters that you plan to champion while on the Board of Trustees?
I think something that's very important to me is first, I'm into everything D.C. I'm such a D.C. girl, I live in D.C., with a school in D.C., educated all my life in D.C. Every college I went to was in D.C. So I'm such a D.C. girl, it's important to me that people understand, UDC is the heartbeat of higher ed in D.C. Notice what I said, the heartbeat, and the reason it's the heartbeat, when people could not go to other institutions during things, times were segregated, they came to mine. Let's start there. Then when things turned a little bit, okay, and we became more integrated, it still was an affordable institution. So I want this university to get the credibility So I want this university to get the credibility, the props that it deserves. And I think that can be done through the alumni. I think alumni are there, alumni out there who are in many positions, who can wave the banner and say, I'm a product of UDC, and I'm proud of it. And that is where my focus is. Anything is built on its reputation. You know, they call, they talk about Howard, the real H-U. But my thing with Howard is, but you're not the heartbeat of high ed in DC. I think we can stay in there because we have educated statistically the residents of DC. So that's why we're the heartbeat. We are the school for the District of Columbia residents, whether you're newly arrived or you've been here five or six generations. So that is my focus. And like I said, the alumni put me here, and I'm going to be here. And I think it's important we look at how we look to others. Image is important, but it starts with self-love. So I don't want to say, UDC is the heartbeat of higher education in DC. And that's where we go.
I like that. Thank you so much for that. Trustee Scott, now that you've been re-elected, and you talk about renaming the gym, you talk about the Academic Excellence Award. Are there other matters, other initiatives that you'd like to champion for your next five years?
Yes. Well, first of all, I like to say thank you. Thank you to our current mayor, Mayor Bowser, city chairman, Mendelson, and the city council for, number one, supporting the University of District of Columbia, not just a lot of lip service, but have been real out there to try to support us. One of the initiatives that we are currently working on as a board is housing. For many years, the reason why we have not been able to be the HBCU like most folks is because we never had housing, so we couldn't attract the kind of athletes and students that we wanted. And so housing is going to be one of the issues that we're looking at. And also, I'm going to put it out there a little bit early, but our mayor has noted that she's committed to bringing the DC historical archives to the campus of the University of District of Columbia. And with all the beautiful history that the university has with regards to its its alumnus, as well as the history of politics in the city, I think that's going to be outstanding. It's going to bring us to another level. So again, I want to continue to thank the mayor, the city council, the chairman, for all their commitment to making UDC the best that it can be.
Thank you for that. And so I'm going to go right into questions. We're getting questions in the chat. So ask alumni, please submit your questions in the chat. I am monitoring, and I'm going to try to get to as many as I possibly can. So the first one, it states that, you know, we have a student representative on the Board of Trustees, but the question is, how will trustees ensure that faculty have a fair and equitable voice and governance on the Board of Trustees?
Can't hear you, Phoe.
Trustee Scott, if you want to take that first question, and then...
I missed a little bit of it because you went out, but...
Sorry about that. So the question is, how will our trustee representatives ensure that faculty have a fair and equitable voice and shared governance on the Board of Trustees? You have alumni representative, you have a student representative, but how are we going to ensure that faculty, they have a fair and equitable voice?
Well, the faculty itself has a student, a senate president who we've been working with tremendously. In fact, over the last year, one of the things that came up was the faculty's increase in salary. And as a as a board, we work very hard to make sure that that their salaries were up to par. And now, I believe, for the next couple of years, they will be be comfortable with where we are with regards to that. With regards to their voice, we normally get, the senate president normally comes to all of our meetings, and we try to support them as much as we can with regards to concerns or issues that they may have.
Now, with the two newly-elected trustee representatives, alumni representatives, is there something that you can you can speak on right now? Like, have you given some thought to, you know, how do we make this an equitable community for all of our constituents? Trustee Musgrove, you want to take that?
Well, one of the things that I hope is possible is that we are invited to the faculty's meeting so we can hear directly from them what their concerns are. Because, you know, we can have a spokesperson. I mean, I have no problem with this president coming to the board meetings and speaking with us, but I think sometimes, you know, you have to be right with the people who, for whom you're working, and get things from their point of view. So I'm hopeful that we can attend their meetings, listen to them, hear what they have to say, and make sure that we incorporate their concerns as we express concerns for the alumni and as we express concerns for the university. Because without a good faculty, we're not going to go anyplace. We're not going to go to the places that we know we can go. So I'm very much interested in what they have to say.
Thank you very much. Trustee White Richardson.
This is an interesting question because I think I think Brother Scott and Sister Musgrove answered it very succinctly. My thing has to do with structure, okay? It looks like this question is asking a question of them being represented on the trustee board. And if that's the essence of this question, then that is one that has to be looked at very carefully as to what the mandate says, the rules say, in reference to the who can really sit at the board and have a vote and a voice. Because what this question I'm getting is that they can come, they could talk, they could be represented. But I think this question is asking having a voice. That's my interpretation of this question, a voice in the form of a vote. And I think that's going to take a little research, whether that's feasible, legal, in the structure of this board. But if we push that aside, what Brother Scott and Brother Sister Musgrove said is perfectly how we can be a voice, is that invite us to your meetings, and at the same time, continue to come to the board meetings and have a voice when the opportunity presents itself. Because we only know what you say and what you represent. And of course, everything does well in writing. You know, if you put it in writing, we can always read it, see it, and present it.
I have questions regarding alumni participation, giving back to the university, increasing donations. There are several questions to that regard. And in your introductions, I did hear, and I'll start with you, Trustee White Richardson, that absolutely, the three of you represent the alumni ranks of this prestigious institution, and we do need to increase participation. Do you have any thought, any ideas? Has anything crossed your mind as to how we increase participation?
Oh, absolutely. I have several ideas, but one thing I always used to turn woo. I do understand, I want the alumnus to understand, that we have to woo Iraq. You know, we got to have you, give you a reason to come back. You have to come see that beautiful building that's behind Phoe in this picture. We got to have you up on campus so you can see where your monies will go. We have to have those kinds of events that bring alumni back to campus. And it is not only just in the during the, you know, the sports period, because I know there's a big dinner, but we need Alumni Weekend, okay? We need some events that bring alumni up there and recognize them for their years at the university, when they graduated, and recognizing what they're doing outside of UDC in the community, you know, for their professional growth. There's so many, and I think one of the things that we're moving and trying to move in the right direction is getting a firm foundation within the Alumni Affairs Office to be the springboard. But the other thing is, I need the alumni to talk to me. Tell me what you want to do. But one thing I want to put, I'm going to put President Mason out here, and I'm going to do it. I think they would love to have a conversation with the president of the university. The same way they're conversating with us, I think we need to open it up and let them have a conversation with him.
Trustee Scott, any thoughts that you may have? With you returning to the board, how do we increase alumni participation?
Well, I think one way of doing that is, I like to see more alumnus participate with submitting their information, their past history to our Legacy Magazine. That has been an excellent format to get out to our to our alumnus, as well as to the community, to find that so people will know the kind of alumnus that's come from the university. I'd like to see us get back to Career Day. I spoke with a couple of alumnus who said they used to come up to the university and participate in a Career Day or for their particular departments. And of course, a homecoming. We want you to come back at homecoming. We want you to come to commencement every year. And now I'm going to put on my foundation hat. Of course, we want you to to give when we have our annual day of giving. We need you to support the university by giving. And I can tell you that over at the Athletic Department, normally at all of our games, especially our basketball games, there is a special section that's provided for alumnus. So we need you to come back and support the university at all of these events. And I believe in the beginning of the year, there's a, there's a meet the freshmen's, and they have a they have a cookout on campus. That's also a great time to come back, meet some of these students, let them know what it's like to be a Firebird, and that you're excited in their wealth and their well-being, and that, and serve as a mentor to some of these students.
Trustee Musgrove, do you have any ideas or thoughts of how do we increase alumni participation and engagement?
Well, in addition to what Barrington and Tony said, I'd like to add that I would love to see alumni become mentors to students in the university. We have an illustrious alumni, and I can't imagine what it would be like if, say, 10% on a regular basis were at the university to support current students. I know, you know, during this pandemic, that you know, that's not a thing that we can do in terms of face-to-face. But this is something we can think in terms of setting up. Even during the pandemic, we could get people connected to one another and communicating. Sometimes students feel left out, alone, you know, if they're struggling for tuition, struggling with classes, transportation, any number of things can be impacting a student. But if they have no one who's gone through the process, gone through themselves, they may feel alone and isolated. And I think mentors could help tremendously with helping them over some of the humps that they will face. And also, mentors could become assets for students. For example, you know, if you own a business, you know business people, you can have students connected to businesses before they come out of school, before they graduate. If you're in education, you can help them understand the importance of education and maybe attach education as a part of what they hope to do in the future. So mentors would serve a tremendous purpose. And that's it. I piggyback on what Trustee Scott and Trustee Tony, and I'm so sorry for being so informal.
No, please, please.
Trustee Tony, I just love Trustee Tony. I love the name, and Trustee Barrington, that sounds so regal. So I piggyback off what they've said about what the needs are, and I just add the whole mentoring piece to that.
Hey, Ms. Palmer, can I ask, can I say one more thing? Can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Yes. As we are dealing with this pandemic, another way that alumnus can can support the university is by coming back to the university as a student. We know that there are lots of alumnus who maybe have gotten their undergraduate degree. We now offer graduate degree programs. We have a law school that's flourishing, and there are many opportunities for doctoral programs. So as alumnus, you can come back to the university, support us, help us with those numbers, get involved, send your grandkids, send your nieces and nephews back to the school where you are prouder. Be a Firebird for life. So that's that's another way that we feel that alumnus can help.
Awesome. In the chat, I'm getting questions with regards to an alumni strategic plan and alumni fundraising goals. Is this something that has been in discussion? Or is this a discussion that maybe alumni, we need to have a future discussion about something such as that? Trustee White Richardson, you want to take that first?
Oh, no problem. Let me tell you something. What needs to be understood, unless you make me feel good, you're not going to get my money. I understand that. And so my my focus is making the alumni feel welcomed, okay? As soon as they feel welcome, as soon as I can get them back on that campus, as soon as we can do the things that make them feel connected, don't worry, the pocketbook will open. The purse strings will be let loose. But like all of us, until you make me feel good, I use the term wooed, okay? My purse strings are going to stay close because I don't see the purpose and the cause. But if you make me feel that I have something to give to that's going to be worthy of my giving, I bet you, and I'm not a betting woman, the money that we will receive from alumni will go through the, will go through the sky, will skyrocket. You know, you don't have to set a goal. Set your focus on the alumnus as the people, and they will give.
Trustee Musgrove, do you have any thoughts on that? In the chat, we're seeing questions regarding an alumni strategic plan and some some alumni initiative around fundraising goals.
Okay, just let me say, begin by saying this. One of the things that I hope we do as a university is to make sure that our Alumni Affairs Office is funded. And when I say funded, based on the budgets and what it looks like, do we have sufficient staff to do the kinds of things that need to be done? So that outreach to alumni, something as important as a database for the alumni, getting alumni involved in university activities. If that office does not have sufficient staff and fund, it's going to be hard. Even with those of us on the board who are working or to support the office, is still going to need funds and staff to make sure that every avenue is being investigated to involve alumni. People respond when you respond to them or when you recognize that they exist. And if we have alumni who have not received communications in any way, emails, letters, pamphlets, can feel kind of left out. And when you start to get the communications, yes, you say sometimes to yourself, I wish they would not send me one more piece of paper. But you recognize they are doing what Trustee Tony said. They are making efforts to woo you, to get you interested and get you working. And while we talk about money, money is necessary to get some things done. But we want alumni to know, we accept all alumni, rich and poor. We need you, we need your support for our students. And believe me, if you attended any one of the legacy institutions, if you attended UDC, you have something to offer because our institution gave us a great deal, and we have much that we can give back. So that's my take on that.
Well said. Thank you. Barrington, Scott.
Okay, well, the first thing that I'd like to say is, I'd like to see our alumnus be able to have the opportunity to be involved on opportunities at the campus, whether that's a job opportunity. We're just, in fact, we're so happy to have you, Ms. Palmer, because you're an alumnus from the university. We were so excited to see that the university decided to use one of our own architects in that new student center that we have at the University of District of Columbia. It was designed by a student at the University of District of Columbia. We're excited to see that even in America, when you spend that 100, that new $100 bill, that that new $100 bill was designed by a UDC student, the first African-American in history to have a circulated bill. So every time you look at that bill, do know that our UDC... So every time you look at that bill, do know that our UDC alumnus are doing fantastic things, but we also do need, and one of the challenges for the foundation is that we can get at least $10 from every UDC alumnus that we have on our books. And if we can't get $10, it's a dollar. But at least we can say that we have 100% participation from every person who's alumnus that we have on the books. And help us by sending at least five people that you know who graduated from the university, their new, their information, their updated email listing, and a phone, a current phone number on them. And then we can start moving this thing in the direction that we'd like to see it go.
That's great, thank you so much for that. And one of my final questions before we wrap up, because we're at 12:54 now, I've had a lot of alum, and one big concern is they do want to send their children, their grandchildren, their nieces and nephews, they want them to enroll at the university. At times, there are some issues getting them enrolled, getting them in classes that they need. And in the chat, there are questions with regards to that. If I send my nieces to UDC as our alumni representative, because we really, I'm hearing what you're saying, you know, we are the first choice for DC residents, there are some great possibilities that can happen, but we have to get students enrolled. As representatives on the Board of Trustees, are you aware of these issues, and if so, have you thought about how we can overcome some of these challenges?
Well, can I take that first?
Please, trustee Scott.
Okay, I know over the last five years, we worked very hard, in fact, trustee Shelton and myself and others have worked real hard to first come up with what we call a DMV rate. That DMV rate was a lower rate than what they would pay as a student outside of the city. We realize that a lot of the alumnus who went during our glory days are no longer citizens of the District of Columbia, but might be in the surrounding areas, whether that's Maryland or Virginia. And so with the permission of the board and the voting of the board, we have now voted upon a DMV rate, which provides the opportunity, I believe it's like $1,000 over what tuition would be if you were in-state. So we're working real hard with that, and it's just a matter of letting folks know that number one, we are doing great things at UDC. Of course, we're branding it now as the University of District of Columbia, opposed to just UDC. We're Firebirds, and we want your commitment to come back, send your students and your families to the University of District of Columbia.
Trustee White Richardson?
I think that our marketing, i.e. a campaign, is very significant in how we put ourselves out. There was mention earlier that we have a commercial on the television, but I would love to see us on the metro buses. I would love to see us in the subway that speaks to the University District of Columbia and what we have to offer. One thing that Bo said, that whole DMV tuition, special tuition was an excellent idea, but the thing is, I don't, I find that we don't have enough outreach to enough areas so that this information is known. We have such a good program, but I really want to see us focusing or reaching out, you know, whether it's through the churches, you know, whether we hook up with the church in, what's the church in Virginia? The meniscus that has this huge congregation, and he's in the HBCU, you know, connection and partnership. We need some partnership with some other folk, so they know, send your children to the University District of Columbia, because they'll get a quality education.
Trustee Musgrove?
Well, I think, hold on, okay. I think that, again, I'm coming after my illustrious board members, and not a lot to add, except that, again, I go back to the alumni. We have an illustrious alumni. We have a communications department. Bring that communications department together with the illustrious alumni, and come up with a program of getting alumni into the faces of students in the District of Columbia and the greater metropolitan area, even areas in other states. Because, you know, one of the things about our Alumni Association, we have fabulous alumni all across the country, and we do have alumni who are willing to work, but we have to tell them what our needs are. What specifically do we need you to do to help us to get children to see, or young people to see, that the University of the District of Columbia is prime? It takes a backseat to no one, and if you come to UDC, you're going to get a quality education. We have to have people who got those quality educations saying that to students that we hope to recruit to our university. So, and I think we're smart enough to do it. I know we know how to do it, we just need to get it done.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. We are almost, we're at 1 o'clock, and I'm gonna ask everyone on the web access, if you would just permit me just 10 minutes as we wrap this up. I wasn't able to get to all the questions, but would you please, if we were to schedule something like this again, trustees, is that something you think that you would be interested in doing? I see the interest in the chat, if we could have some more conversations like this?
Sure.
Yes.
Because what I didn't get to, we have questions from our international student population and our international alumni ranks. Once I came back to UDC in this seat, I had a lot of internationals alum contact me, and you know, they were just asking general questions, but I realized, not only across this great nation, but just across the globe, we have this international appeal. And I've shared with so many people that my mother was a graduate of Washington Technical Institute, and in her study group, there were so many international students in our home, in our living room growing up. I believe, like, all of Africa was represented in that living room at some point, and it was just amazing to me. What I came to learn is that UDC throughout the decades has always offered an affordable quality education, and that's something that we need to remind DC residents, our council, and our mayor. I want to thank each and every one of you for being with us today, I'm gonna give you some final words, but I wanted to turn to trustee Shelton and see if he wanted to add some closing remarks. We also have trustee Schwartz and Chairman Bell to allow them some brief remarks as we close this up. Trustee Shelton, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of my new alumni trustees that are coming to the battle. I am so glad to hear you and see you and have you aboard. I want to make sure that everybody understands it starts with the individual. We have UDC gear that you can get from the Firebird store. The District of Columbia offers DC tags for UDC, you can get them, and marketing is a critical part, and staffing of the alumni office and everything that was stated on the endorsement poll. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Trustee Schwartz?
Yes, let me add my welcome to the new trustees. Thank you for joining the team, working on behalf of the students. Without the students, there would be no need for this university. So we have to work with them, we have to get the alumni involved, we have to continue to press forward. The staff and administration is there to make it better for us. I want to thank President Mason and his cabinet, all the instructors that are working on behalf of the students. I want to express my support to them and hope that we will move this forward in the coming years. Thank you so much.
Chairman Bell?
Thank you, this has been a very rich conversation, and I appreciate the opportunity to chime in. I just want to say, I think we have three outstanding new alumni trustees, I think all the trustees are fabulous, but I'm really looking forward to the contributions of the new trustees as well, because there's a sense of energy and vitality, and what each of you have talked about, and your desires to make the university a better place. And as trustee Schwartz and trustee Shelton have said, I think the critical key is the alumni. You're a valuable part of our organization, and for so long, we've been unable to reach out and connect with alumni from the university. So that's been one of our top goals, along with the foundation, to increase the membership ranks and increase information and contact information, because we don't have emails and addresses for so many. And as you've pointed out, from the, you know, our reach is international, we do a good job of educating students in the DMV, a whole host of international students speaking all kinds of wonderful languages when you're walking by on campus. And so it's a good group, it's a great group, and we're looking to increase and grow the ranks of our alumni, and I just want to say thank you so much for what you've done in terms of the idea. And you have my commitment that we're gonna do everything we can to maximize the voice of the alumni at the university so that their presence is felt. Thank you.
Thank you. I have on the screen right now, I'm gonna make some really quick announcements, but we are convening a career readiness webinar series. I've had a number of our current graduates, our current alumni members, reach out to me, and they've shared with me that it's just been a little difficult in this current climate to find jobs. So I need for every alumni to hear me when I say this, you still have resources at your alma mater available to you. And so we're going to convene this career readiness webinar series, the first starting on September 30th at 6:00 PM. We're gonna do an introduction and a walkthrough of the handshake system. You should have received an email of the entire roster of webinars that are gonna be taking place, building your resume, building your LinkedIn profile, and navigating career affairs. So please know that Fiber Nation, we're still here for you, we still want to support you, we still want to hear from you, let us know how we can be of service, please. Also, we're celebrating the class of 1970, congratulations, we're all a fabulous alum, the 50th anniversary of the graduating class of 1970, and we have some awesome plans in place. If anyone is interested in being a part of planning these celebrations, this is all part of Homecoming, please email me at alumni@udc.edu. Mark your calendars, because we're going to do a virtual Homecoming along with students, it's November 8th to the 13th. We're gonna have some day of volunteer service at Marcus' table, and so I'm asking as many Firebirds as possible, if you can come out. I volunteered during this pandemic at Marcus' table, because it's really a great service to residents east of the Anacostia River in War 7 and 8. And so they do practice social distancing, they have every safety measure in place, so definitely email me at alumni@udc.edu if you're interested, but you will get something in your email really soon. And we are now in our season of giving. Season of giving is underway, we're now in the combined federal campaign. I do have the UDC Foundation CFC number on my screen. So for federal workers who like to support their favorite causes, and I hope the UDC Foundation is one of your favorite causes, our CFC number is 13321. We'll soon launch the DC One Fund, and that's for DC residents to support their favorite causes, and then we'll go into our Giving Tuesday, which is December 1. So we have three ways for alumni to participate. You should have probably received your email or request. I want to thank everyone who supported the Student Emergency Fund. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I cannot tell you how important it was for so many alum to give back to our current students. The UDC Foundation received requests of rent assistance, food assistance, something, you know, their cellphone, keeping their cellphone on, and I'm so happy that the foundation was able to step up, and we still need your support. Our students have such great needs, and we're trying really hard to be there for them. Really proud of the College of Agriculture of Sustainability and Environmental Sciences, and the urban ad team. UDC Firebird Farms, a 145 April Farm in Bellsville, Maryland, they've been growing fresh produce throughout the pandemic. The president talked about in his interview with Project Nami, that the farm has delivered as of the end of August, over 8,000 pounds of fresh produce. I'm talking chile, charles, swiss chard, broccoli, and people on and on, because I've seen production firsthand. And the, one day, I'm on Good Hope Road, getting coffee at the Safeway, and the truck was behind me making deliveries one morning. So, I mean, that team is so awesome, and we do appreciate them, but again, alumni, we do need your support to continue to support our students. And before I sign off, if we could please, I'm gonna start with trustee White Richardson, if you want to give some closing remarks, then we'll go to trustee Musgrove and then trustee Scott to close us out, please. Trustee Musgrove, I'm sorry, trustee White Richardson.
Okay, I just want to make one quick correction. The One Fund is not district residents, it's District of Columbia employees. So, I used to cherish. So anybody who works for DC government can give money to the University of the District of Columbia, and we'll gladly welcome it. Number two, all I want to say is, I look forward to representing the alumni, and I hope I represent them well, but I need them to give me their support, so I can be the voice and the face of their contributions and what they want to do for this university. And I know they want to do plenty, thank you.
Trustee Musgrove?
I like trustee Tony, stand ready, willing, and able to support the alumni of the University of the District of Columbia, as we come together as one to support our school and our students. So please stay in touch with us. If you have concerns, you have our contact information, let us know what you're thinking, so that not only do we represent you on the board as we think you should be represented, but we represent you on the board as you would have us represent you. So stay in touch, and please tell somebody else that you know got a degree from the University of the District of Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Scott?
In closing, I'd just like to say again, thank you, alumnus, for voting for all three candidates. We plan to try to do a lot these next five years, of course, as Tony said, we'll need your support. I want you to take advantage of the udc.edu, that website that we have has lots of information, we have an alumni section that will give you updates. I know Bo's gonna do a good job of making sure you get that information, but on that website, you have Thoughts from the President, you have the commencement speech, which was outstanding this year. We had five students to participate in our HBCU Week with the Voices of History, and that was outstanding. So utilize this website for virtual tours, anybody want to know about the University of District of Columbia, please use the website. Again, thank you for all you do and continue to do, and I do want to remind everyone to vote. Please vote, this election is going to be the most important thing that we can do, not only just for ourselves, but for our students, so encourage your students, your loved ones, and people to go out and vote. The election is, I mean, the first debate is tonight, so don't miss that, but please continue to support the foundation and what we're trying to do, and I think it will be moving up. And as trustee Shelton said, go ahead and get some paraphernalia, if you feel good about what we're doing, you're a Firebird, God bless you.
Thank you so much, trustees, for being with us today, I do appreciate this conversation, and thank you alumni for tuning in. We will do this again, so stay tuned. If I have your email address, you will receive the announcement, but please feel free to reach out to me at alumni@udc.edu with your contact information as we endeavor to keep you up to date. Thank you, everyone, please continue to stay safe.